Madam Alungilita Sils, el merga ra adroguu, Vice President, Senator Mariur, Flor Lider, Senator Aldabel, ma kamiu roguu bo kunga asmeri tiangani amo o ngaii mel sils, la lo ngelol mel togu betsel ondi brigid, el mora ordel. Kleri gamua rolgol.
Senator Retchis Agitaya, Senator Ruqobai Kikuo Inabo.
Oi.
Senator Jonathan Shoy Saal.
Oi.
Senator Stevenson J. Quartey. Senator TJ Imruur Romosaw.
Oi.
Senator Mark Bouerbalau Rudim.
Oi.
Senator Umi Sangabau.
Oi.
Senator Kazuki El Taps Sungino.
Oi.
Senator Andrew Tabalwal.
Oi.
Senator Mason Niere Abangal Whipps.
Oi.
Flor Lider Cecy Lil Aldabel.
Oi.
Vice President Karai Mariur.
Oi.
President Hauconz Paulas.
Oi.
Mister President, tangani akorum.
Ngari akorum, ma Senator Quartey, ma Senator Agitaya excused bo gun tira, Senator Aldabel ngia flolider gid, bo longutigai gregid rau rele, Senator Aldabel.
Mister President, mamsaula malungilita sils el mergau ma rebekla adh, e was sebedel mo mesatenda regid, el al sils. Daborsel item four nde kanga ngaii ma dabora fire. Mang tanautara Prescam 11-185, ngia transmitala presidential proclamation na mbanga ngia 22-327. Direkla ngania Prescam 11-161-186, ngia nomination for appointment of Mr. Crispin Temetet, el mo member Palau Environmental Quality Protection Board. Di tanauta ngaii ma dabora appropriate el parta kalender. Ngania Prescam 11-187, etiang au kirela government of Palau medium term fiscal strategy, fiscal year 2021, el mo 2024. Lo tutele document, emdiri gamu damesengi. Esel mo lomol, el mna ra obisa daytori el mia Prescam 11-188, ngia nomination of Mr. Charles Desengel Machutaro, el mo adala board ra Palau Visitors Authority. Etang apament, emsere dabora appropriate el parta rat na kalender, damesengi. Egidama lomol, marsel item six, ngania imol mna ra department head, mang tanautara Department Communication 11-38, etiang am diplomatic note na mbanga ngia Manny Pol 161, 11/2022. Etiang Kanbei, Kanvera Bavier, el mna ra etiang anoraboll speaker, Ra Blue India. Kloutu tere communication, gamu damesengi, Mister President, tere dabora information rebekla. Direkla dolmol mna kalender gid, nde kanga 7, dabora 8, report of standing committee. Makmum da adoptra Standing Committee Report 11-114, etiang au kirela Senate Resolution 11-77.
Si dam motion namdu ne se, bo gu tira chairman ra tourism, Senator Sangabau bo lbeskidar report, Senator Sangabau.
Solay, Mister President, committee ra tourism, environment and maritime, amle motmokotiang. Unfortunately, losa beela Senator Romosaw, uchionetiang, ya kmal ngitreni kose wulse report, etang i de particular report, ma uli tekiil rau la el mna ra Senator Romosaw.
Senator Romosaw.
Solay, Mister President, tiel Standing Committee Report number 11-114, melutke kirela Senate Resolution number 11-77. Etiang, Mister President, blame asan ngir ngia committee ra tourism, environment and maritime, er sera o ngalol mel special session regid, el al buyl, er sera o ngaiwi del gobsengi el al buyl. Mister President, etiel resolution omletke la daytori regid, atanga kal President Whipps, el melut kra Ms. Ofilia Ongali Bang Johannes, el mo adala Palau Environmental Quality Protection Board, IQPB, el calcela edera. Wase, Mister President, etang ma lblektakl tiel title or tiel resolution, ma committee ra temam losa beel lo mesai gal babi ngel, ngal namani. Direkla mna ngia telele, Mister President, er sera Lou El Gobsengi el al buyl, tiel mlo regal buyl, June, el lo hold ra hearing lobongel ngal namani. Mister President, ma committee ra lo metigal, wasengal Ms. Johannes, ngilua master's degree regi ra urban and regional planning, osisutai, em direkla ngilua bachelor's degree regi ra natural and environmental management ra University of Hawaii at Manoa. Osisutai, Mister President, ngilua associate's degree regi ra liberal arts, Ra Honolulu Community College. Serara ra 2005, el mo 2006, ngal Ms. Johannes, ulor rural geographic information systems technician Ra United States Army Corps of Engineers. Serara ra 2006, el mo 2008, nguk noselo rural research program assistant, er sera Research Corporation Ra University of Hawaii. Uriura e ra ra, Mister President, ra ra 2016, el mo 2020, ngal Ms. Johannes, amno rural para professional teacher Ra Hawaii Department of Education, ya uriu say, em ilamol, el mo substitute teacher. Direkla osisutai, ngal Ms. Johannes, ra lakira Balu Ra Hawaii, etuluspe regi sel Hawaii Court District ra ra 2017, el mo 2019, el Palawan Language Interpreter, uliui ta togora Belau, el mo togora Amrigel. El altame, Mister President, ngal Ms. Johannes, a uroral geographical information system, planning expert, ra Ministry Ra Agriculture, Fisheries and Environment, lo giusel doduk mlaseng CF6, malubong global environment facility project, el base ra alse la Palaris Office, el ander ra Ministry Ra Finance. Wase, Mister President, mallo sabaela Ms. Johannes, ra alse tegi de hearing regid, er sera Lou El Gobsengi la tiel mlo regal buyl, el nosabeela uais regid, lo waseng ma l samariar, ekaltmokle, el mo adal tegi de board ra IQPB. Em ilamol, malu uais, waseng ma ldeka kora raktel, ngsaarela abadengel, malubong ngod, el kora al suusmari ngi, luul, man deka sabael mo member ra board ra IQPB. Mister President, ngulu uais, lo waseng aigal klikei gen ngaringi, malubong background regi, ma experience regi ra togora planning, ma geographical information system, ma environmental management, ma lla kutmakli, eh, ruli, mang malo marang, lo waseng aigid, luku plansuva, ra arngela tamlo uror, ra tegi de luror, em sabael mol ngasera, a kuca rau rele la IQPB. Direkla mlo maketaklil, wasel altame, ngurur lobongel, trui el state ra alse la Balu Belau, el maktmokla i gel doduk mang state master planner tir, aigai gel mo kangester, ra togora land use, ma marine special planning, los pe, atogora sain, smadirekli gel el local base knowledge, malubong i gel eh traditional knowledge. Ma base tra aigaid, el experience regi, Mister President, etang ma llo marang, lo waseng sabael mol ngasera gid ra uku togora IQPB. Direkla mlo uais regid, waseng malungil madengel, waseng ngaringi gel bebi ra uku 30 ngila togora IQPB, al wa ya togora permit, el lomdasu, waseng bo longal tangat, bo sabael mo ra mo member board, emsere el mol ngasur, el create ra data base, malubong kora streamline ra tegi de permitting process, el mo ensure transparency. Wase, Mister President, committee ra tourism, environment and maritime, mallo impressed, malubong mallo smiar ngud, aigal uku sel representation ngal namani ra do hearing lobongel, eh, mal malol, malo marang, lo waseng ka okmanganat toko, mosel mo member IQPB, em direkla sel uku ngusu gid, aigaid, el bebi ra base uldassu, lomdasu, amo maktmokla ra alse la IQPB. Wase, Mister President, committee amal regamend ra adoption, ra tiel resolution, ra regale tiel senate, Mister President, solay.
Solay Senator Maria Shalmiga, gamend, Senator Ishal.
Mister President, atimo ku feseltroya, rote, akmalo mesetiel personal dera, malubong vezemir ngal dil, malmo impress ra our experience regi, i gel plal reporta chair Senator Romosaw, ma lbleop avrele, kora avrele red field, askulel, ma lblektakl lbleop, kanga udogalil, kanga ngalagran ra, ngalagran esar, ngalagara, ngalagapasangala Balu Urio. Nganga sel do mesar, wa aigaid, babiere, ngalagara, matkei ngalkei, Mister President, ingo ngila uku todu, se ser girar parents' killing, that's where it all starts, your home. Mang kanga ngaligela Marcelo Ngiraglaora, gel long time legislator ra bedura ngesar, klera House of Delegates, ma Rus Ongali Bangal, to dogalii, mne maktegpl employee ra court, suptem court bela, wea seriments kabama mdegelii, tgeti gel oura ala togora seres, ma babi, ma mang dursan psakweita, parents' kir, kiri oknai, se se ten ngalagargir. Esel ma klabul kuula, gdomel saigal ra ra, tobras kura early 2017, ngale mna skura mizenti, emo ngaii me ngaii, 23 years in back, tolongse ra Balu Belau. Se aigid, ser ma lkora mokte, ra i gal ludo toto, el mo scholarship, waseng event, se ngaligela with her, eh assume some of this important position, raka elemente. Solak, dimokratulaitit ngi, etiel appointment regi. Eh, under second note, tangani selbi ra house, mballo kontroversial mle, dem asan ngir ngia committee ra JGA, el lo amend ra IQPB, el mo ander ra minister, albe se ministry ra agurigaltior. Ma koro omesai gal appointment tra President, emora IQPB, lo waseng, wal kora omakpe esar, adh ngal ngutal ngar ngi. Selbi girel du ngil, togora me re mes regi, edesat tiel esel board, ngora mkitaditikri, adha board, el mo e uku tore ngi. Endi, ya gomdasu, etiel au ngerul appointment tra President, body pressure bebi tregel, long time member ra IQPB, ma kuadi muduli se, eh, urita support rebekla adh, embon ngardil, solay.
Senator Sangabau.
Solay, Mister President, tra tiel le, mali solak, otiam sisi, support ra befr committee, kirela ngal namani. Akmadengi, kmasera, gdogal tangat, tabalu Belau, sel suguma ana menia, oba degirir ngi, mal fit, el mora uku uroral, President, tamla appointment regi, el mo board, et malo marak, mase segid, luku legei gen ngaringi ra togora planning, adiregal mosel help el lore da, urora, a permit, sera IQPB. Resel suguma state tamla TV ra rau rele, logiu land use planner tir, kwaseng somama blumama bo longan ra. Ya IQPB, amo mimokle, sabael dimre da, lgo ngaii, aigid, lgo ngi. Se, Mister President, ta gomdasu, mal, mal ni dede, aigal state government, el mo otik, kwaset, aigid, a uku somama, ngania dalong ok regi, tegi da uku ngania, a uku tigel kora togu betsel togora shovai, tegi da uku bo ngia seres. Masel olap permit, ya IQPB, adimom sak, kwaset, diak tiel inline, lobongel, sel uku rungulela state government, wal mre da permit, el se ilpob. Akmadengi, kmasa segid, uku rau rele, el al, lobongel, ministry, agriculture, fisheries and environment, amal mo complement regi, sel role regi, uku pol adra board IQPB, ma malo ngita support rebekla Senator sel girela ngal namani, solay, Mister President.
Solay, Senator Sangabau, Senator Mariur.
Mamsula President, aktrir, mna ngasulia committee, mal, bo ngel committee, soa support, ngal mar ngal namani. Akmadengi, lo waseng ka, lama omol, tras kulel, ma i gel luror, blal ngari, mne madengi, lo waseng ka, mal marulio ngil luror. Endi, mo akmedlo aigel olgoya chairman, waseng, kwa tregal, aigal tiel board IQPB, amral wal mangaringela, environment Balu Belau, ndosi sultai, em direkla deka bo stop arwa development. Ngiril lowuror, lobongel, Balu ra, togora development, emde adiduk mu stop emrogo. Alsumo mol, deka sabael, ngiril ngari, uri gamend deyson, kwaseng ngirid, lma kraneng mosabael. Aigid, ya gomdasu, ngia mosabael, aigal project, el malol, em diol ngito, waseng amral, mo esar adra board, endi, kwa diregal, mo ngel segid, uldasu, waseng kwa mangaringela, environment, emde almatman, ndosi sultai, mke da, olosia development, emde maktmokle, mo ngil mo sabael mo uku mo ngirar advelau, ma Balu Belau. Aigid, ya kmal soa support, ngal, namini mortal, solay.
Dieng. Sum dieng, etirge roguu, il gongert tiel Standing Committee Report 11-114, il du oi.
Oi.
Om tok. Namai, Flor Lider.
Mister President, kada malol, mna ngara item eight, ma daborsel nextel report, makmum da adoptra Standing Committee Report 11-115, etiang au kirela Senate Resolution 11-79.
Si dam motion namdu ne se, em direkla kloutu lon tira Senator Sangabau, bo lbeskidar report, Senator Sangabau.
Solay, Mister President, etiel Standing Committee Report number 11-115, bo kreport regi, kirela Senate Resolution number 11-79. Committee ra tourism, environment and maritime, maritime, bo amle assigna tiel resolution, amlo kirela confirmation, presidential appointment, of Mr. Chakson Doctor, el mo member board of directors, Ra Palau Visitors Authority, el calcela erurak. Etiang, Mister President, lblektakl, kirela appointment, el mna ra President, ma committee ra, amlo, alban ra rau rele, lo mesra, kirela ngal namani, em direkla ulmesa resume regi, em lo metigal ngi, kwasengal, Mr. Doctor, amle attend ra SR Elementary School, er sera 1976, el mo 1984, ediregal, llo lomel maskuler, ngilua secondary education regi, Ra Palau High School, ra ra 1984, el mo 1988. Since resegid ra 1988, Mr. Doctor has been employed, er sel Palau Pacific Resort, assistant manager, oversee market research, ma promotions department. Diregal, uer segid, el posisyon regi, mne security guard, Ra former Grace Hotel, Palau. Diregal, committee ra, mle note, kwasia, Mr. Doctor, amle ngilt, el state legislature, legislator, el servera SR State Council, since ra ra 2008. El altame, hold ra posisyon, Flor Lider. Diregal, ulmesa resume ra, Mr. Doctor, ya committee, nosa beel senda resume, ah question, sol mori ngi, kirela qualification ser ngi, kirela tiel posisyon, President Whipps, amla appointment. Ulu uais, ra committee, kwasen, deka ngidil shovai, malubong financial connection ser ngi, ma committee regi, wal bol ulamongu, deka se ulitl ngar alel, ediregal, deka saarela, wal bol prevent regi from performing, er sel uku turis, ngia ablal assign, el mori ngi, as a board member. El altame, ndeka el member bebi ra board, authority, ma ngidil nam government organization. Committee, direkla ulgera, Mr. Doctor, el mosabeel, kora describe performance ngi, provide a recommendation ser ngi, kirela atogera PVA, mil uku, kwasen, deka okmase, PVA, el altame, amal kora lo mes regi, btoka ngil relen, lal gatmokle. Endi, malatka, kwasel bo, bo sabael, mo ventir, el uku subi, tegi de agency, bo sabael, uroral, help, improve, aigid, uku bebi ra uroral, ngal alse tiel board. A gidi le, Mr. Doctor, diregal, milsa, kwaseng, because, tegi de togora COVID-19, em diregal, toka challenges, el bo face regi, PVA, endi, malo marak, mase, ngaringi, a uku sabael, el mokutmakli, el diregal, mo help, el market, eh promote, Ra Republic Belau, as a safe and premier destination. Diregal, kwaseng, kirela, mo collaborate, lobongel, ra restra board, lowuror, kirela, kwasega, mgarang, el mugtel, nguti tiar turis, el mna Ra Balu Belau. Diregal, malo marak, mase, kwasel, suguma, mo member tiel, mosel, confirm regi, ya ona first party, ringi, amo committee, ra temel, el mo uror, lobongit, aigid, el bebi ra members, eh, ngomra, mase, gel uku experience regi, na urora, togora, klango dang, lba togora, amal se el mo ngusu gil, el diregal, mo balongutmok, ra ngil, maka tangeela Balu Belau, el mora kre belau. Milsa, kwaseng, la attend, abtoka, trade shows, manganakter, ngar aukche, Ra Balu Belau, em madengi, mase, ngra, aigid, uku turista, sore lo mes, er sera Albera, Balu Belau. No uspe, atara example, eh, Mister President, kwaseng, uku uspe, Ra Balu Wara, SR, kwaseng, okmomo se, uku kutmakla, aigid, kora vashol, sel bo, mrega turis, uku kal dive, eh, BLBC, travel da, bebo si il kora marara, dulula, aigal, meseng, uku kura lo mes, bebi ra uku wes, bebo si ira, ma as, uku kota, kora bebi ra, amage tingir, ya ngomra, mase, aigid, ya va, sore turis, diregal, kora mesra, wa, wa gpe lau. Mal, llo marak, mase, segid, kora klo, klikei gen ngi, experience regi, mla mongara, over a doori, ish, lowuror, ra togora tourism, adiregal, mal sabael, mo ngusu gil, el kutmakla ngar alel, kirela tiel appointment, Ra His Excellency President Surhal Whipps Junior, kirela el mo adra board Ra Palau Visitors Authority. Ngungiusay, Mister President, committee ra tourism, environment and maritime, amal ngita support rebekla Senator, sel girer, tegi de appointment, solay, ra tiel.
Solay Senator Sangabau, Senator Ishal.
Mister President, se adu tiel appointment eh, nomination, ngar rubak, Mister Doctor, by His Excellency President Whipps Junior, member board of directors of Palau Visitors Authority. Ngari ak iliwil, solak, dimos ser ngi, statement tra President. Ngakmulasi, Mister Doctor, ngania over three decades, namo bto, ode ra ra, our experience regi, la tourism industry, that's, that means a lot. Ekmul waseng specifically in scuba diving. Ngal, Mister Doctor, amla complete the different level of courses, aigal bek level, omshu bela, a professional association of diving instruction, ageshe, as a padi, to become a certified master scuba diver trainer, eh direct, padi, medic, first aid instructor. Aside from his scuba diving professional, Mister Doctor has earned certificate for completing the Palau Boating Safety Course Program, Malklabul Gul, the Coral Reef and Sustainable Marine Recreation Workshop, Malklabul Gul, and Coral State Tour Guide Certification Program. Ngal, Mister Doctor, amde glia, sel tielt, togora kangodan, Merbelau, togu ni, sel dungura dive. Malklabul Gul, etiagida, khotek tole market, el Merbelau, amen mi, eh dive, omeset tielt, ebkalila, Merbelau. Malmo ottingi, ngar rubak, ra experience regi, over thirty years, em tiel appointment regi, amal, uli ta support rebekla adh, emdu, solay.
Sum dieng, etirge roguu, etirge lgonert tiel Standing Committee Report 11-115, il du oi.
Oi.
Om tok. Namai, Flor Lider.
Mister President, kada malol, mna ngara Standing Committee Reporting, daborsel nextel report, makmum da adoptra Standing Committee Report 11-116, etiang au kirela Senate Resolution 11-82.
Si dam motion namdu ne se, em kloutu, el mo tira chairman Sangabau, bo lbeskidar report, Senator Sangabau.
Solay, Mister President, committee ra tourism, environment, maritime, adiregal, blame assigna ngi, tiel Senate Resolution 11-82, kirela ngal, ngasal, radil, Jennifer S. Olgaril, mul turit, aigid, Mister President, uli tra Senator Inabo, mal bo, ngakuma gaya, resume regi, bo sabaela, Senator Inabo, kildra la, el mori ngi, bo report tiel committee.
Senator Inabo.
Malungilita sils, eh, Mister President, malsaula Chairman Ra Tourism and Environment and Maritime Committee, ta kpo Senator Sangabau, mskate ala, makmo, o give tiel report, Senate Standing Committee Report number 11-116, ngia mo report, tiel kirela Senate Resolution number 11-82, el mo omalari tiel resolution, el mo confirm ra appointment, Ra Ms. Jennifer S. Olgaril, el mo member Ra Palau Visitors Authority Board of the Rectors, two years, el luldurukli, ta kanga President Balu Belau, President Surhal Whipps Junior, el mera senate. Ma tiel resolution, eh, Mister President, amo omalari, kanger, Senate confirmation, etiel appointment. Ma tiel resolution, eh, ngilura senate, er sera June 21, 2022, six special session, ma kau President, amle assigna tiel resolution, el mora, committee, la chairman regi, Senator Sangabau. Ma committee, amlo mesra resume ra, ah Ms. Jennifer Olgaril, em lo mesang, waseng ka, ngania associate degree regi, ra liberal arts, from the La Sen Community College, Ra Susanville, California, edirengi, batzler's degree regi, ra sociology, from the California State University, Ra Chico, California. Ah, Ms. Olgaril, diel mal, btoka, a certificate of completion, el lola, ra training regi, from the Australian Institute of Police Management, lang lo sabael, el mo mo complete, aigal post graduate course ser ngi, Ra sel executive leadership and police management, Ra New South Wales, Australia, sera 2021. Marcel, bo damesa experience, Ra Ms. Olgaril, eh, sera 1989, el mo 1991, ya Ms. Olgaril, amle uroral computer day. Ni Ms. Olgaril, amle aurior el computer data entry specialist. El wayal student interna California State University. Seran nineteen ninety-two, el mora twenty fourteen, en lo kota, el mo administrative officer two. Ediregal le gukka promote el mo administrative officer three. Em lo marretra sel administration section. Ra uer albol deputy director, Bureau of Public Safety, Ra Ministry of Justice. At twenty fourteen, engi am lo aurior ra coral state, el chief ra coral state government division of law enforcement. Ra uer albor tial ngar alel erelang, urerelang, el directora Department of Conservation and Law Enforcement. Ma kamiti amal lo misangalwaseng kal, Ms. Olgaril. Ah, amakata'tanga lauriora alsela government, ma aigel bebe ra nan government, tira'al ngar ngara conferences. Mangania training ringi rabato'ol bepatingela aurior, la momerakal lokatira. Ah, kamiti am lo mesaga il babilngela, ah Ms. Olgaril, em lo senda ra bebe ra moringi, lo gera bebe ra gera, el girel tial appointment seringi. El girela kura experience seringi, ma qualification seringi. Ms. Olgaril am lo ayser agamiti ilwashe, umkongel, ilwaseng mosabeel, el servera gal tourmal, blal appoint seringi, el girel. Ediregal, diakora siobai ringi, malubing kura financial connection ringi, ma gamitmenteringi. El mosabeel ruley ma moringa conflict of interest seringi, alsumong mortial position seringi. Ndiregal malmasisi, apengel, ndiakora arak, tel mos o, el ni amo ruley ma muda kasebeel ra mulangar alel, el membera board. Eh, el altayam indi'al membera ngidil board ra government, malubing authority, ending wayal kura ablal tutki. Oh, ulgi teringi, el kongel, el mo membera board ra Palau Conservation Society. Ah, kamiti diregal lo ulgi tra Ms. Olgaril, malvolu ayse il experience seringi, ma aigel kura pa'al. El ruley mal sumong mo membera board, eng mal mosabeel gutmo kla il ngar alel board ra PVA. Ma kote'ang lo ayser laseng, um. Se, base sel gora amlubreelal chief ra coral state government ranger sel aimerak. Edine, ediregal directora State Department of Conservation and Law Enforcement, emla mo ewadrak. Yaigal klegegenarira auriora mlamsanga atial, mang wayal sal ngara alsela tourism tial togora klakangodang. Emla mo, emla experience, ah, waseng marama do, oh, adam kadre or auriora tourism. Edoru laigel, kura policy development, ma regulatory, uh. Implementation, el mo sebeel, el gutmakli tial mongil sebeel manate, regulate. Et tial coral state, Rock Island Southern Lagoon, RISL. Mang, ngo ayser laseng, tia gidil, lurererera conservation, aigegidil, uh, lo'ola bornia touristi. El diregal mo sebeel, lomes lashe personal safety touristi, e ungi larandir el mora aigal basiol borni. Et ta'seintaim eto tirakla aigero gueel, tiragiri lurtirakla. El protect, the conserve, et tial ecosystem, ma diversity tira, uh, Rock Island. Ah, malmlamasanga klo experience, laurior lobantier touristi. Ah, kamiti diregal lo geringil, lasa kam kura ayse igel, lamdasweng experience seringi. El algomongura PVA, and sebeel, um, mosabeel gutmakli, ya, aungil aurior el board member. Mang, oyser lashe, selgu kuldaswell, ya, PVA, amal lungil aurereel, girela klakangodang. Tira'al lungil aurereel, lo tarara blur belau, ilwaseng ungi lalabre ringi are touristi. Ending, tira'al malmadengel washe a PVA, amaring la ngar alel. Eh, ya omdasel washe albol, al ngartial board, eng sebeel mal understand, aigegidil, uh, talitelela tourism. Mang sebeel, el mo omaring laurior lobenge la board, etta gutmo lauriora ngosuira. A PVA, el face aigegidil challenges, eh, smi ga ungi solution, el mosabeel, el help ra PVA ra oturulela blur belau as a tourism destination, destination. Ah, kamiti diregal ulgera Ms. Jennifer, laseng ngara omdasel waseng mosabeel gutmo. Alsumong mortial board lerudra. Mang, ngarang ngora first priority ringi, mang, amle enseringi, aywashe, um, omdasel waseng mosabeel, uh. Mosabeel gutmo kla aungil aurior, el ngosuira PVA, mang mo obeota aurereel. Eh, tatmagi smi aigel gotal ungi solutions, el sebeel benefit ra klakangodang, etiregal mo uklunya olalma ra aradab belau. Mang, aigegidil, ensera Ms. Olgaril, ya, kamiti am no sebeel, uh, ruley, ya, gutmakli, ya, confirmation hearing. Lobangela, ah, Ms. Jennifer Olgaril, sera June twenty-seven, twenty twenty-two. Ma kamiti am no sebeel meet seringi, o gera question seringi. Malmaringa solution tia girel Senator Sanlo sebeel metel hearing. Tira'al mane beto'ar, aradal lobangela, ah, Ms. Olgaril, el may hearing. Adumisanga rubaharangri, ma tlungalga bebe ra family members seringi, maradal aurior lobangela coral state. Ma aradal auriora PVA, ma bebe ra aradadi, regal auriora aigel kura atogera omatmakla environmental gi. Ma sera hearing, eh, atamari ngasiya Jennifer, mallo sel, oyser sel klermyar rengarangri. Masel, wayal, plakarengarangri, ngirela aurior, wasegadam marama gutmakla touristi. El mosabeel lungil aigisa ergid, eh, etiregal etta saintaim, etta safeguard, etta protector sel pristine paradise environment ra blur belau. Mang, sera bolmerak tial hearing, eh, Mister President, ah, Ms. Olgaril, adiregal. El bloga geringil, waseng marama albol, noru laurereel, el directora coral state government. Ediregal membera board ra PVA, alsumong kura moringi, ah, titu'akal, luldasama, lubing policy decision, el require ringi, el mo. Oh, wayal pol. Lulaseng marama alatraporta PVA, el kura morura decision, aldi'al, el kura mo matang on, amal ubing kura momaring, el mura. Uh, gurereel, el directora coral state government. Mane kura ungi la enseringi, waseng. Malumrakal waseng sebeel meka gut, uh, ungi decisions. El lultu re aigel, uh, value system ringi, ma hiding principles seringi, omdasel washe aigel decisions albol. El help el remula, aigel gotal mongil mura PVA, eh, swales ra coral state, alsumuira blur belau, el gutmo kla aungil tial. El girela ungi to'oi, mo moru, el mo girela, uh, national policies, el mo benefit ra aradab belau. Ma kamiti aman lungil remesa, aladala Ms. Olgaril. Eh, gora manu impress, laseng kama malmadangli tial tourism industry, lultu re aigel experience seringi, ma, uh, laurereel. Ya omdasel waseng mal lungil ato'wo, etta support tial nomination seringi, el mosabeel mo atal board ra PVA, lerudra. Ma kamiti ra tourism environment and maritime. Chairman Songoval, marirelita lungi report, eh, Mister President, amal ungi tra, arangela, uh, support tial Senator, eti'al resolution Number eleven dash eighty, eighty-two. Sula ne, Mister President, te seida report agamiti.
Sula ne, Senator Inavon, Maria Shal, Mokmusese, Senator Isal.
Digadep, uh, ngabo'ol one minute, agotek, te support trakal morangal namani. Ongirungu ngaria statementil delia, ta'akwa Senator Inavon, maltla'bulgul. Selkmulwashe, ngara statement tra Ms. Olgaril, lakmasi akpo'ngi. Eng understand, washe mo face a lot of challenges, emral tokoi. Kada'mla, angarabu alel la post-COVID. Mister President, magubringa lashe, el al, direktor pa'alBSR, al board ra PVA. Egale lungil bol gora ngarinya, gatmo kla gora tourism industry symposium, ngaranklel. Tilgibel meski da direction, washe, melagadukkumra'al budulge da to'ora touristi. How do we promote tourism going forward? Eh, eh, do mes washe, aigal price regid, ra sel belau affordable, attractive, mora touristi. Adang, wangaramo, el gora di, adamasual, PPI ala ngar setual, PR ala ngar setual. Aigem gidil motet ra wa, outet a apilio, ma aigel soal. Akumdasim na mogirel, ngarinya gora one price with all, kura systemic approach, el wa bektu blu. Kuama malmisi, kuam sitos, gidorni. Eh, mitiga ngagi ni laurior, ral face a challenges, sel diakadil promote lursisip. Edirek lursisip, emergo, eh, edistibun. Et tial kangodang, lba'elolgo, setorska bawa, adam odai, belme, uklagadil ngara, agambega lowlans, lbursel tabungsan. Eh, guklo mesadu la okubures ngarakle. Aigegida muklobulgul, ngirel, ngara post-COVID going forward, ndiakadangara, a before COVID going backward, sula.
Senator Sumino.
Sula telege, Mister Presidente, malungili tasis, sirme'epklav. Tira'al maldimo, obenge la chairman, emal mosu support, el girela, kal Ms. Olgaril, ling larinya gukka, tega lauriora obenge ra coral state. Gora dimo kusese tial to'ol, diregal umdaseng, mo help peridra gora decision making, aigegidil, ling, nga malprofessional radil. Akmedengi kmasa aigegidil, lemensona, se report, kmo albornia conflict tra coral state, ma guk PVA ra decision making, ra to'ora policy, la modorangarang. Akmedengi kmasa nganga, ngalmaasa, amal professional, emedengi ngar alel ra guk to'ora policy making, am sure mo make sel decision, el guk modor sel adorri. Emegra right al decision. Ule mensona Senator Isala, gidegal, sera gima ra coral state, gidegal lulumrakmasa. Ngirela, tira'al ngara PVA, lomes ra, aigal tretelela, a tourist, uh, tour, uh, area sera blur orior. Ediregal ma aigal rogul bulur ababel da'ob. Eh, gora arulia price tagarini, ra, tretelela, wa letse blue corner. Uh, high value dive spot, tia gidil guk moringa, a price tagarini, el gagaru singi, ma aigel guk bebe ra dives, uh, spot ra blur orior. Ngirela, uh, PVA, diregal lomes aigegidil, ra arangalel, ya umdaseng aigegidil, uh, Ms. Olgaril, klo experience seringi segidil, merut ra aurior. Malbo'ngi malmo klo, el benefit, el mora blur bela'le, umsebeel guk otobda aigegidil, gora tige genarangira, ato'ora orior. Ak tira'al maldimo obangela chairman, ama, uh, gilukneri port, eh, mal mosu support, ulgi tra beklavara supporter tira'igela nomination, sula.
Senator Songoval.
Sule, Mister President, agamiti amal dimo, tira'agamiti, man meringa sula'la Senator Inavon, ra sel, commandel extensive report, ling. Mural lo otia, adep tra experience, ma aigel uelela ngal, Ms. Olgaril. Ak malmeringa sula'le se report, Mister President, akumdaseng amal swakal gora mo point out seringi ra sel hearing. Kwa se selgu experience ngara to'ora Bureau of Public Safety, ma Department ra law, Conservation and Law Enforcement. Akumdaseng Mister President, ting mal, girel mo gikre sel to'ora safety ra, uh, tourist, ra alsetial Rock Island Southern Lagoon, ma diregal belau rogir, ling. Selbonia accident, ting isela blur belau rogir. Ak malumrakwaseng nga mo auriora obenge la, esakolaboratory, mo auriora obenge Ministry of Justice, ma Bureau of Tourism, ngartial board. El mo help el make sure, kwa se aigegidil gora, uh, minor, malum mishaps, malubong kura accidental happen, ra. Relation al mora to'ora tourism, ma mosel guk, walauriora lobi tiga gidil agencies, eh, make sure indi'ala happen, logioa gora negligence, malubong katerakakra aurior. Malmeringa sula'le, Mister President, tial tial.
Sula ne, Senator Songoval. Digamudo. Tirgelo gongera Standing Committee Report eleven dash one one six, lduoi. Om Tok. Namai, floor leader.
Mister President, aigegidil, aigel guk ngar tial, atendargid ra, uh, mo reporting committee. Uh, adakati nim, Mister President, di guntera certrices.
Certrices. Dakloutal, mgodonges session, rigidil mora order. Floor leader.
President, gada, nara, uh, recessi, engari sing, tar, klo report, el, gora milingi ringi, segidil nam available. Namrosa marbekladam, uh, dilungile, ebolsebeel, el arulia motion, el suspendarul, sugidida, the place tia ngar tial atendargid.
Si dam motion namdunge second, uh, for the place tial. House Bill Number eleven dash sixty-four, dash seventy-five. Seven S, HD one. El mura first reading, etirgelo, uh, second reading, etirgelo gongel duoi.
Oi.
Om Tok. Namai, floor leader.
Uh, so place, eh, Mister President, uh, gadal mutal goba, uh, gadal, morsel item eight, tra reporting. Ma, akmo arulia motion, ma mose edel. El adapt tra Senate Standing Committee Report eleven dash one one seven, tianga girela House Bill eleven dash sixty-four, uh, seven S, HD one.
Si dam motion namdunge second, uh, buguntira chairman away senmin, Senator Inavon, bol baski da report, Senator Inavon.
Ulitasi se, Mister President, uh, sulara tial tial, al mosabeela, agamiti away senmin, sel, mo, uh, ruley tial. Senate Standing Committee Report eleven dash one seventeen, tiamo report tra, uh, House Bill Number eleven dash sixty-four, uh, seven S, HD one. Tial, luldasel mola, uh, amo, gongera otobda lela, uh, additional, uh, da'lela, uh, budget tra FY twenty twenty-two. El, el ni amo authorize additional two point, uh, six million. Eh, ediregal, uh, ngartial bill ra house, aigal gidil, eh, mo amend ra title twenty-seven, el mu gongera marine special planning process. Metial House Bill Number eleven dash sixty-four, uh, seven S, uh, amle modurok, el merah Senate, sera June six, twenty twenty-two. Yeah, uh, His Excellency President Surhal Whip's Junior. Uh, uldurukli tial supplemental budget bill, el merah house ma Senate, sera May twenty-four, twenty twenty-two. Ya house amle paseringi, adur reading, tia gidil guk, uh, HD one version acti, eh, uldurukli merah Senate, sera June six, sera twenty twenty-two. Ma tial, uh, supplemental budget bill, President, takdi mo go over a. to make changes to the House. The House, we have to read the legislative finding, we have to make the authorization, the executive branch. And the committee, we have to make the changes, the rules, the rules, the rules, the rules. We have to make the changes, the the FY22 budget. The authorization, the 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 appropriate the 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 changes to the committee rule, we have to make sure the authorization amount that is issued, and the appropriation amount, plus 2.6 million. Plus, 200,000. The additional, the the committee, we have to read. The grant assistance, the the supplemental budget. The grant document, we have to make a total of 7.8 million. Yeah. We have to make 2.6 million, and we have to make after the 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 committee, we have to make the 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 authorization amount that is issued, the appropriation amount, plus the funding, the executive branch. I have to make the house amount, 1.8 million, we have to reduce the general cyclical fund, 650,000, and 450,000. Three up, and 200,000, and we have to read. We have to make the the appropriation amount, we have to make the except 200,000. And we have to make the authorization amount, the change amount, we have to make sure the authorization amount that is issued, the entire budget. And we have to make the policy changes, 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 we have to make the special planning. We have to make the Title 2, Title 24, Title 27. We have to make the the ministry fisheries, and environment, and the grant, and we have to make sure that the ministry, we have to make sure that the ministry, we have to make sure that the 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 environment, we have to make the 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 environmental dollar. And we have to appreciate, 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 Oh, Mr. President, I'm going to say that we have to make the House bill. Okay. But it will be May, and we have to make the House. And we have to make the final version. We have to make the final version.
Senator Saba.
So, Mr. President, I'm going to say that the committee of the Senate, we have to provide overview to the Standing Committee Report. Mr. President, I think we have to report the tourism, environment, and maritime, we have to make the legislation. In regards to the policy, Mr. President, we have to make the National Marine Sanctuary. Mr. President, I think we have to make sure that the committee, the senators, we have to make sure that yes, we have to make sure that the major policy, the regulation, the National Marine Sanctuary. We have to make sure that 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 we have to improve the changes. Given the time, we have to make sure that 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 we have to make sure
Senator Saba, Senator Inabo.
Mr. President, I'm going to say that the committee report, we have to make sure that the miscommunication, 11-475, provides information to the committee report. The reason, the committee, we have to make sure that the report will include the changes. Because the Senate, we have to make sure that the Senator Saba, and the committee, we have to make sure that the committee report, the 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 committee report, 11-117. So, long, Mr. President.
Okay, discussion. Senator Isal.
Mr. President, I'm going to say that we have to make sure 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 that in the near future. But I think we have to make sure that the report is the first, paradise, environmental fee. We have to make sure that we have to make sure that 100,000 dollars is PPE. And I'm going to say that the time, 12:15, the national report. 12:15, the pension. And we have to make sure that 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 we officially open the under the 12:50. But hopefully, we have to make sure that 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 Mr. President, I'm going to say that we have to pay attention to the chair lady. And I'm going to say that the title, the It's the 14. The committee report. The under the section five. We have to make sure that 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 I hope I'm clear. And we have to identify that the supplemental, we have to make sure that 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 we have to make sure that
Senator Senator Mayor.
So, President, I think the committee report, we have to make sure that 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 we have to make
We have to make sure that 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 Oh, I'm going to say that we have to make sure 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 that we have to
We have to make sure that 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 we have to make
President, I'm going to say that we have to make sure 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 that we I think the mother of all bills should be changed. I think the executive branch is Mr. President Whipson. We should get the FAA. We should change the change. 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 Mr. President.
Senator. Senator. Remo Shaw.
Mr. President, I think we should report the committee with reservation. I think we should change the chairman Inabo. I think the chairman Sengavau. I think we should change the change. I think we should change the change. We should change the committee. The members of the committee should change the policy. We should change the change. I think, Mr. President, I think we should change the change. We should change the policy. We should identify local source of revenue. We should change the change. I think we should change the change. We should change the change. We should change the change. We should change the budget. We should change the change. I think we should change the 2.6. We should change the change. We should change the change. We should change the change. We should change the activity. I think we should change the committee reading. The engineer should change the source of funding. We should have local revenue. Either we should have a cyclical fund or the official trust fund. I think the second quarter report for finance in March is over 10 million. We should change the change. We should change the change. I think we should change the change.
Okay, Senator Shaw.
I think we should change the change. We should change the change. I think we should change the change. I think we should change the change. We should change the change. The president should fund. I think we should have a Bureau of Customs and Border Protection of 150. We should have a Bureau of School Administration of 400,000. And a food service program of 200,000. National Capital Electricity Management of 100,000. And a Bureau of Public Safety of 250. And a Public Severely Disabled Assistant Fund of 221,000. And a Bureau of Hospital and Clinical Services at 279. We should change the change. We should change the change. We should change the change. I think we should change the change. 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 The president should change the change. We should change the change. Mr. President.
Senator Shaw. Certainties. I think we should change the change. Leader.
Mr. President, I think we should change the committee report 11-17. I think we should change the committee. I think we should change the committee report. I think we should change the change. I think we should change the change. We should change the change. We should change the change. I think we should change the policy change. I think we should change the ministers. I think we should change the officials. I think we should change the change. We should change the budget. I think we should change the change. I think we should change the change. We should change the members of the committee. We should change the change. We should change the change. We should change the change. I think the president should change the change. The source of Okiwa grant. I think we should change the perception. I think we should change the condition. We should change the change. We should change the condition. We should change the change. I think we should change the perception. I think we should change the change. I think we should change the condition. We should change the change. 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 I think we should change the change. I think we should change the change. I think the recommendation of the senator is we should change the change. I think we should change the change. We should change the change. I think we should change the change. 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 I think we should change the change. We should change the change. I think we should change the report. I think we should change the change. I think we should change the change. 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 The 2.8 the supplemental budget. I think we should change the change. I think we should change the change. I think we should change the change. We should change the change.
Senator. Okay. I think we should change the committee report 11-117. I think. I think.
President, I think we should item eight, the reporting of standing committees. I think we should change the change. Bill calendar. I think we should change the first reading. The second reading. The second reading. House bill 11-64.
I think we should change the objection. I think we should change the change. I think. I think.
President, I think we should change the change. I think we should change the resolution. I think we should change the change. Senate Resolution 11-83. I think we should confirm the presidential appointment of Mr. Chris Intermete of Palau QPB. Palau Environmental Quality Protection Board for a term of three years. I think we should change the 11-84. I think we should confirm the presidential appointment of Mr. Charles Desengel Matsutaro. I think we should change the visitor's authority for a term of two years. I think we should change the resolution. I think we should change the change. I think we should change the resolution. The Senate Resolution 11-85. I think we should confirm the appointment of Ms. Michelle Adorma'ah Owusu. I think we should change the Senate Legal Counsel of 11.
Okay, I think we should change the appointment of Chris Bill. We should change the board of quality protection. I think Charles Desengel Matsutaro. PBA. I think we should change the senator Sengavau. I think the resolution of the legal counsel in the hearing of the chairman is asked to adopt. I think we should change the certainties. I think we should change the change.
President, I think we should change the resolution. I think the last resolution 11-85. I think we should change the change. I think we should change the place of the Senate Resolution 11-85. We should
change the change. I think. Certainties. I think we should change the change.
President, I think we should change the change. I think we should change the Senate Resolution 11-77. I think we should change the title.
Senate Resolution Number 11-77. A Senate Resolution confirming the presidential appointment of Ms. Ofelia Ongalibang Johannes to serve as a member of the Palau Environmental Quality Protection Board for a term of three years. The Senate Resolution Number 11-77. I think the presidential appointment of Ms. Ofelia Ongalibang Johannes of Palau Environmental Quality Protection Board of the Council of Edera. The Senate Resolution Number 11-77. I think we should request the President of the Senate, Jocuns Paulas, by request.
I think the resolution I think we should change the change. I think. The Senate Resolution Number 11-77. We should confirm the presidential appointment of Ms. Ofelia Ongalibang Johannes. I think we should change the Palau Environmental Quality Protection Board of the Council of Edera. I think we should change the 11 yes and 10 no. I think we should change the 11 yes and 10 no. I think we should change the change.
Mr. President, I think we should change the next resolution. I think we should change the Senate Resolution 11-79. I think we should change the title.
I think we should
Senate Resolution Number 11-79. A Senate Resolution confirming the presidential appointment of Mr. Jackson Doctok as a member of the Board of Directors of the Palau Visitors Authority for a term of two years. The Senate Resolution Number 11-79. I think the presidential appointment of Mr. Jackson Doctok of Palau Visitors Authority of the Council of Edura. The Senate Resolution Number 11-79. I think we should request the President of the Senate, Jocuns Paulas, by request.
I think the resolution of Jackson Doctok of the Board of Directors of Palau Visitors Authority of the Council of Edura. I think we should change the title. I think we should change the Senate Resolution Number 11-75. We should confirm the presidential appointment of Mr. Jackson Doctok of the Board of Directors of Palau Visitors Authority for a term of two years. I think we should change the 11 yes and 10 no. I think we should change the senator present. I think we should change the excuse. Leader.
President, I think we should change the Senate Resolution. I think we should change the Senate Resolution 11-82.
I think we should change the title.
Senate Resolution Number 11-82. A Senate Resolution confirming the presidential appointment of Ms. Jennifer S. Olgril to serve as a member of the Palau Visitors Authority Board of Directors for a term of two years. The Senate Resolution Number 11-82. I think the presidential appointment of Ms. Jennifer S. Olgril of Palau Visitors Authority Board of Directors of the Council of Edura. The Senate Resolution Number 11-82. I think we should request the President of the Senate, Jocuns Paulas, by request.
I think the resolution of Jennifer Olgril of the PBA. I think we should change the title. I think we should change the change. The Senate Resolution Number 11-82. We should confirm the presidential appointment of Jennifer Olgril of the Board of Directors of Palau Visitors Authority for a term of two years. I think we should change the 11 yes and 10 no. Leader.
President, I think we should change the change. I think we should change the Senate Resolution Number 11-85.
I think we should
Senate Resolution Number 11-85. A Senate Resolution confirming the appointment of Ms. Michelle Adorma'ah Owusu as the Senate Legal Counsel for the Senate of the 11th Olby Akulua. The Senate Resolution Number 11-85. I think the appointment of Ms. Michelle Adorma'ah Owusu as the Senate Legal Counsel of the Senate of the 11th Olby Akulua. The Senate Resolution Number 11-85. I think we should request the President of the Senate, Jocuns Paulas.
I think the resolution of Ms. Owusu as the Senate Leader.
I think we should change the title.
I think we should change the title. I think. Leader.
I think, Mr. President, I think we should change the change. I think we should change the Mission. I think we should change the 11-465. I think we should change the President Whipson. I think we should change the Board of Directors Resolution Appointing and Acting Executive Director. I think we should change the Mission. I think we should change the Senator Tabalwal. I think we should change the teacher certification. I think we should change the Mission. I think we should change the 11-467. narra FIB, solicita kamin, ngariil FIC application. Diregal miscellaneous communication eleven thousand four, six, eight, diregal narra FIC, ulgu ki rela FIC FY Twenty Twenty Three Budget Submission. Ngariya miscellaneous communication eleven thousand four, six, nine, ngariya Office of Special Prosecutor, ulgi rela quarterly report for second quarter FY Twenty Twenty Two. Ngariya miscellaneous communication eleven thousand four, seven, zero, et tiangam narra US Embassy, ulgi rela visit of Mr. Paul Groff, the US Congressional Staff Delegation, ngat aldu belaw, ulgusela July Dord, el mo July Six. Diregal ngariya miscellaneous communication eleven thousand four, seven, one, et tiangam narra Acting Secretary General Nukroha, ulgi rela One Forty-Fifth IPU Assembly in Kikali, Rwanda. Diregal ngariya miscellaneous communication eleven thousand four, seven, two, et tiangam narra WIOL update, morsel House, Senate, iwe gu progress aurora WIWA. Diregal ngariya miscellaneous communication eleven thousand four, seven, three, et tiangam narra sel Ministry of Health and Human Services, ulgu update, ulgi rela COVID nineteen mitigation measures, iwe gu pesel ulu travel ma entry requirements. Diregal ngariya miscellaneous communication eleven thousand four, seven, four, et tiangam narra FIB solicita kamin, morsel ngariil FIC application. Sel mo ulbongol, miscellaneous communication eleven thousand four, seven, five, et tiangam narra Senator Inavo, morsel Senate President Paulis, ulgi rela compromise, ulgu pasra House Bill eleven thousand sixty-four, thousand seven S, eighty-one. Ni amo appropriate, sel additional two point six million, el supplemental budget, morsel FY Twenty Twenty Two. Iwe gi de, Mr. President, a miscellaneous communication, ulgu mesoi rela session, ed olmoll marakalindel morsel Sixteen, miscellaneous business, ngariya miscellaneous business, the Senator S, strateal.
Senator Sungino.
Sule, Mr. President, na telegi, ndisogalinga teal teale, egote, Mr. President, takmou naga sulim. Diregal nomregga, teal Pacific Mini Games, abluwa saibal, mgsogal goradi mo ulit al brief, samari report, goradi mo smodi a guk tretel el, emnari sel closing ceremony elil ngari ra national team. So, Pacific Mini Games, emnari ra saibal, esatun seventeen, el motoni five. Nor niya telegal guk milnil telop tera, abluwa teal blidra Senate, el mo leadership meeting, emnari ra maidori, goradi milisi arangriar adalits, oaisa guk elil esambasador, alum ter belaw, morsel games. Team official sel lun ter gi, ulngat gi, tim twenty-two, amnariya alosmose sel safety mission, Marcy Andrew, Stephanie Omei, Isabel Goodell, ma Radley Kazuma, ma Kenny Clay, tri gi da un tera guk tim twenty-two, sel administrative staff. A Pacific Games Association, ngariya President Frankie Otama, Bakla Tamil, Secretary General, madigal tim el miral, amnariya Dr. Tsun Rafael, Ma Jason Nolan. Iwe sports, sel mosu be, guk participator, tiagidel nomregal, clayungada raklolo, Adal Erikso, amnariya gotsel, Charlie Ellis, ma Francis Kil. Baseball, amnariya Melip Matul, former Presidenta Senate, Senator Melip Matul, el team manager, ma Burton Wong. Beach volleyball, amnariya Saki Nayvana, ma Marvin Wasisang. Golf, amnariya Roland Tangalbath, Traadron, amnariya Pasquana Flowers, ma William Taheda Junior. Vaaknu, angel Tino Faatouala. Yeah, weightlifting, ngariya Stephen Patrice. Ngara dirigel ngel, lewin, iwe tril gold medal, ulgi rela tim Palau. Baseball, adirigel mosu be, ulgu win ra bronze medal, ulgi rela Republic. Iwe gi events, aulumu ulu morsel goramne taitang samari ra terogil tim. Tim advance, tim amle, mlosa saibal esatun nine, araybal ra adalits, amnlaratun eleven narugul adalits. President Ki Otama, mosu be, el moratun fifteen, el motoni one. Dirigel mosu be, ulgi ngai, mosu be, om tera, arangalela Senate, om ter gi, el mo goram dal la leadership, lobentriar adalits, iwe gi tam, ngai ngasengaka, ma President Ki Otama, mal, loongila arangriar adalits, ulgi mal mesa, a support ra leadership, ulgu Senate aulder, klin mol, mo om ter gi, rogu. Opening ceremony, amal mulakloboga, tim Palau, amal mulo, lewila, bilir, ma guk tretel ira opening ceremony. Secretary General, amosu be, el me open tria tim esatun eight, ngi ma geni re clay. Diregal ngariya Pacific Games Council General Assembly, se se gi, sel gorarangalil teal teoraa Pacific Games, ngariya meeting, mosu be, la President Ki Otama, Secretary General Tamil, chilton, el present, sel guk gorasamari, ma goraoverview ra atretelil abodhost ra Twenty Twenty Five. Kadam dengi, ku pasi kadamo host se gi, mngariya gorashort presentation, mngtama no impress, ta teri rogu, ne participating countries, ma look forward, el mer belaw ra Twenty Twenty Five. Iwe gi, agora taitang, le brief al tretelil omra, ma competition amnari, esera esatun twenty-six, sel mosu be, la tim twenty-two, el return el mer belaw, el dimlag a gorase, ma etamler rogu. Ngariya goradi brief, il loongila, sadaleng mildur eli, gorah closer, terogil programmer guk tim twenty-two, a Pacific Mini Games, mng, aidisira adalits, aidisira adamne participator teal tim twenty-two, tim Palau, ngara seventy-five, la, tri gi, ten to fourteen years old, amnariya one male, ma two female, fifteen to twenty, ngariya fifteen male, ma five female, eh ma twenty-one to twenty-four, ngariya six male, twenty-five to twenty, ngariya ten male, ma four female, ma thirty-one to fifty-five, ngariya fifteen male, ma six females. Ngarin, dirigel ngariya adra ngoto, uludiregal, ulusergi, ulgi rela tim twenty-two, ngariya ne fifty-seven adra belaw, fi chi, ngariya one adra fi chi, ma tul adra huripin, one adra Nigeria, ma one adra Samoa, se gi, amnlo gorarangalela ethnicity, ra adal, ne represent ra tim twenty-two. A number of male athletes, ne participate, amnariya forty-six, seventy-three percent ta teri rogu, mnor a saibal. A female, amnariya seventeen female, twenty, twenty-seven percent ta teri, amle ngalga dil. Employed participants, amnariya fifty-seven percent, ta ngariya uwerir, thirty-six ta teri, edim letrir ra teorogil tim, adim laguwerir. List of employers, tri gi, adra guk, iwe gi, tri gi ngara, tim twenty-two, amnariya two business managers, ma three business owners, ma twenty-three employee, the national government, ma eight private administrative staff. A number of students, ne participate ra tim twenty-two, aidisita ra idesemif, la, a thirty-eight percent, twenty-four ta teri students. Iwe gi, agora di brief samari teang, Mr. President, arangalela odod, miloit ra teorogil trip, amle ngara, le report, ngariya Secretary General Tamil, chilton, el mu ne hundred fifty thousand dollars, amiloit. A fifty thousand dollars, ri niya dible lreis, ri niya adalits, ma gotsa, ma tim twenty-two. Esel hundred thousand, amlosu be, ilonit, a odod ra IOC, ma solidarity, ma iwe gi, business sector, abluu belaw. Se gi, Mr. President, agora di brief samari teang, ya, akmal di ngat teale, malou naga sulim, arangalela Senate, ra sel guk ne part, tri gi, participator teal tim twenty-two, mal lewila arangli, arangalgez, tamal me blak arangli loosu go, le mal me wongil ambassador, abluu belaw, makteou naga sulim, ri ya teal, sulam.
Valmshoule, Senator Sungino. Senator Inavo.
Mr. President, kamsoula, na teal ngara miscellaneous news, e, kunda se, maklotu telela teoraa, amosu edalo ai, ser sel miscellaneous communication eleven thousand four, seventy-two, se sel report ra WIWA. Ma, tal WIWA, odod ra amregel, mnergi, dalo, ogiu sel CARES Act, el, el velpas, ri niya kongore, sera, March twenty-seven, twenty twenty. Etablo, il badengelanges, bamla ra alsel, ngariisela, dalaseng PU A, Pandemic Unemployment Assistance, ma sel FPUC, sel Federal Pandemic Unemployment Compensation. Ma, tiagidel, sel PU A, aulamu orsera February twenty twenty, emlo, omregar, sera September four, twenty twenty-one. Sel FPUC, amlo mu orsera April five, twenty twenty, emlo, emlo ender, sera July twenty-six, twenty twenty, elilu talamu orsera, December twenty-seven, twenty twenty, emlo, omregara September four, twenty twenty-one. Mr. President, amnariya seven hundred forty-two claimants, el mu lo, oloanga, ababil ngir, el olonit, ta teal ngetswa. Six hundred sixty-six, ta teri, Clement, amlosu be, il maya ngeswa, el, sel klungel ngeswa, el nor ter, ol tu, ol mu ne, tu il, er sel wasi income test, sel klungel, odod alingilu. Sel klungel, agaragari ngir. Ma, mng, ngariya, agarosel retroactive payment, iwe gi, no per, iwe gi, il, legi rel income artir, earned income artir, ra darongelela December twenty twenty-seven, and mora, twenty twenty-seven, twenty, twenty, el mo September four, twenty twenty-one. Mng, tri gi, mosu be, il may gi, dalu, odod, ta teri, six hundred sixty-six, la, ah, ngilaya, ah, odod, ra ududir, ra darongelela April twenty-six, twenty twenty-two, el mo June twenty-four, twenty twenty-two. Mng, tri gi, lo, ool, telwasiaklungel, a, a, agaragari ngir, odod, a hundred fifty moriora, tal Sunday, ah, angilu, ngara twenty-five thousand ninety-two dollars. Tri gi, lo, ool, telwasiak income artir, a, a guk lo, a hundred fifty dollars ra tal Sunday, am, amlosu be, il maya, a guk, odod, al ngario, or se gi, dal twenty-five thousand ninety-two dollars. Ma, ta teri rogu, il, a, da ngilai, gi, duasi retroactive payments, ra, ulgi rela thirty-six weeks, ra iwe gi, income artir. Mng, tiagidel seven hundred forty-two, me, submit a claims artir, ya, seventy, seventy-six artir, adimlag, ngaya odod. Ma, WIWA, lilu sababiel mortil, oaisartir, wasa kemiya, team eligible, al mlaya, kemiya amno team sabiwi, el mo eligible, al mlaya, galu odod. Di tiagidel seventy-six, la, de, Mr. President, ati ga sabiil, el mo, o, appeal, sabiil mo appeal, and sabiil mo wasin, dia nganha, ah, la, tim lagu, mungil, mesa, ngaral babil ngir, ke hutmok, esabiel, winner, appeal artir. Ya, al sugumutowin, et, et sabiel, pe, el mo, se gi, seveni six, la, ta sabiil mo, maya odod. Mng, tri gi, dal, al, seveni six, la, ta gi, il, mlangua babinngela WIWA, blisender ngir na post office, el morsel boxer, artir, el wasing, ra ul, mngno teasil, malu odod. Di, al sugumut appeal, er se, ngiril, meri, adra mora WIWA, mesa, iwe gi, babil ngir, ke hutmakli, appeal artir. Ya, al sugum, mo, wongil, sel appeal artir, et ti ra mosu be, il, mosu be, il, mlaya, galu odod. So, Mr. President, tri gi, milaya, iwe gi, PU A, amle, ngila, eight point three million. Tri gi, ngilaya FPUA, angilaya seven million, ma total, iwe gi, ludod, dalultod, the WIWA, fifteen point three million. Edil kamde, la, three point eight million. El two point four million, PU A, ya, FPUA, one point four million. May gi, dal, three point eight million, am ngil, tiagidel seventy-six, la, el, mo file appeal artir, ya, al sugumut, tamo, msi si, ra appeal artir, and sabiel, maya, be bir iwe gi, odod, andi iwe gi, mo meri, galu odod, iwe gi, el return, abluu belaw, morsel Department of Labor, am regel, len dekal sabi, dal uspe, el, morsel ngidil, ngod, ngara, el, dekal, lultira, kertegi, dal, CARES Act. Ma, tiagidel seventy-six, la, de, President, amal gi, il mo hutmokla, ababil ngir, la su, ababil ngir, el, mo appeal, iwe gi, geisartir. Sulam, Mr. President.
Mal wongil, report, Senator Inavo, andi, ngariya, be bir, tirgal, adal uro, se, el wasi, sel, mregen, gi, de, return, ndiak, sabi, lomdas, wasi, dolu, sel mol, askirtil, wasi, kalil, sabi, el mora, ika gi, let's say, for, iwe gi, iwe gi, small business, employer, tri gi, adra, cross act. Le, landi gi, tri gi, employees, la odod, iwe gi, gi, dal business, operate, adiaklo la odod. Mng, kalil, ngariya, role, le, lo lu, sel mon, ela, didun, diak. Tamla, mlas, mng, ndiak, sabi, mlu, sel mol, se, diak, molas, mng, mol, mlu, sel mol, wasin, kalil, sabi, el, ding, la, sabi, el, adolu, a guk, ti, dol, diol, tirakla, la, ela, a, 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 woro, sel, effort, tri gi, dal, osigar, role, le, edor gudi, sel odod, kalil, ngariya, role, le, edor gudi, guko, ki, be bir, ra, el. Ya, adolu, wasa, be, el mon, diak, damad, di, sabi, dal, angua, wongil, ansel, wasin, ngara, moru, tringi, diregal, losigar, role, le, sel odod, dal, pora, ti ga gi, dal, ngara, cross act. Mng, la wongil, la uspe, wongil justification, le, le sabi, el, maski, da ansel, wasin, diak ngan, oi.
Galakmalusi, ababil, morsel, Director, amnri naga sulim, Director Glendalina Ngirmeli, Executive Director WIWA, officer belaw, akmo, mlu, sel mor ngir, wasin, tila, hi, dal mor, ngir, sabiel, dal request, ngir, mal, ubing, ngara, at least, submit ra request, ta gi, de, e, wa, la, do ngir, ta teri, seveni, seveni six, la, seveni six, la, dal, remula claim.
Diregal, mosigar, role, la, teal, cross act, le, sel, amo, meri, rela, al buil, mga mosigar, role, le, wasin, diak, role, la, Minister Finance, sel, goram, ngoro, raptil, olkall, el, help, per, tri gi, gi, dal, adal, mal, continue, a cross act. Len, dirgal, kado, recover, an, unless, se, gum, recover, le. Gertu, cigar, role, le, olongse, ra, adal, se gi, da, dol, ngir. Flo leader.
Mr. President, ngaro, sisul, isu, ak, tiagel, malomra, kmasing, a, a, amal, sabi, dal, ruli, on ti, la, government, tiagel, adra, double, louru, a WIWA, amal, di, otout, sel odod, lultui, sel, ngariil, ulu, CARES Act. Andi, gumraq, na se, abluu belaw, es government, ta sabi, el, logiwa, agora, resolution, sel board, ngi, omesa, tiagidel, lurerela WIWA, et, recommend, mora, President, el, na se, med, derel, li, agora, on ti, logiwa, teal, guk diplomacy, gi, ra, darongele, gi, mmeri gel, edolngi, tra Departmenta Labor, el, na se, bolsa, am, el, uspe, teal, dalengel, teal, grant, global support, sel program, ra, abluu belaw, ta gi, dum, ple, mention il, cross act. Eh, eh, ogiu, se gi, lon ti, de, kdo, re, el, na se, bol, sabi, el, am regel, gongeri. Akmna se, wongil, adat try, ra, la, 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 da try, orole, mngonge, eurule, ebol, gorak, kmasing, dimlag, malingit, ma ulm, dimlag, kogot, teal, odod. Mng, akmalomra, kmasing, derel, li, on ti, dal mong, logiwa, Ministry of State, Drew Proper Channel, ra government, akmna se, sabi, el, mra attention, ra, tri gi, guk merida, State Labor Departmente, el, as, ilmo, gongeri.
Senator Tabloal.
So, President, di, trate, Alex, so di, sel, miscommunication, eleven thousand four, sixty-six, tiya, babil ngir, morsel, Minister Chinkins, sera, congester, sel standard based professional certification and performance system for teachers, et, tiasel, dodongil, wasin, teacher certification. Teal, lakil, babir, adingel, ulm, mra, agamitira, ulu, ra, uru, ngir, mga, de, silu, bi, am lo, nganiya, trenting, iwe gi, alsel. Edirigel, mlu, sel mon, la, agament, ra, adal, tira, mktat, l, louru, school, mnganiya, trenting, la, teoraa, school, mga, du, ngit, ra, Dr. Telay, Dr. Swala Blay, ma Director Ventil, odarsa, agament, review, ngir, odarsa, agament, artir. Akmal, nganga, saw, set, tri gi, adal, adalu, sel mon, etu, larsa, ba, bil ngir, mai, di kmal, mo, to, ubets, mri naga sulim, la, Director Ventil, ilu, teal, ba, be, el, mon, ma, sur, chikling, mesa, iwe gi, ngan, alsel, eh, odarsa, wal, trenting, wasi, ika gi, om bes, tiang, wongil, ndi, ika gi, da, sabi, el, mutu, ulim, wongil. Mga, de, ngir, uch, se gi, el, ki, babir, adingel, alme, olabe, eurulob, ngel, legal gansu, ulgi, de, ngom, mo, lagta, la, legal gansu, wasi, teal, RPL, ten, thousand, two, girtmakli, tiang, wasi, eh, mo, mo, hutmakli, a certification, ulgi, uluduklin, mra, Senate. Di, Ministry of Education, as, sabi, el, diogiu, a Administrative Processes Act, the IPA, eh, hutmok, legal regulation, mngmo, togo, mola, eh, otirakla. Mga, gaul, lagri, ra, Senator Quartel, mmosa, legal gansu, le, gi, goram, lo, gaw, ngim, agi, gi, ngir, wasi, tiagidel, wongil, teletail, eh, adungut, tiang, me, do, o, gi, wa, la, do, tergukli, eh, bol, ta, time, bol, ulgi, ulgi, ngiti, tu, guringil, all, better, time, etu, ngiti, tu, yang, mo, otit, u, la, abai, ilogu, se gi, IPA. Moki, tiagidel, uldas, we, kada, mlu, sel mon, Minister, wasi, olbi, aklulaw, di, gi rel, malar, a, pi, otu, sit, teal, teoy, ndi, bo, mo, gi, IPA, esiu, kutmakli, teal, mola, adi, tal, teoy, dimlag, ngan, as, sit, teal, biski, da Minister, adimlag, sel, odod, il, gi, rel, podol, otut, tiang, ngara, odod, mo, a, gar, tiagidel, teacher certification. Masera, vitra Minister, April twenty-eighth, l'over, minimum, eh, cheering, lo, ngel, la Minister, mto, le, iwe gi, adudum, akta, sing, gi, rem, mo, wongil, odod, ngan, as, tiang, odok, care, tiang, oduklin, ma, Senate, mga, se, la, gi, o, mes, ringi, msi, la, morsel, time, mmo, se gi, ya, Senate, bol, kroal, ra, gula, odod, ngara, tiang. La, al, si, se, President, kada, ngir, Minister, ingiril, kutmakli, se gi, dal, wal, odod, ngel, teal, certification, andi, ogiu, IPA process, ingiril, mo, kutmakli, se gi, dal, teletail, masel, bol, wei, se gi, eh, eurul, time, gi, damo, se, dal, mom, estirir, eh, mora, goma, gai, morsel, wasin, ma, a, congester, a, odod, ma, arangle, otut, teal, teal, teoy, teacher certification, mak, akmal, nganga, saw, gi, rela, ngeswa, agamitin, tiagel, adal, tira, odarsa, odoswir, iwe gi, di, il, Minister, kutmakli, sel, guk, trenting, ngar, ngalelo, gi, IPA, eh, mgo, gi, bodod, ngli, arangle, la, odod, mo, a, gar, tiang, may gi, congester, teal, teoy, se gi, de, nyamro, a, ulaw, la, Senate, ebol, se, dal, mo, gaw, ngim, akmal, di, mri naga sulim, gi, se, eda, ga, ubing, it, se, il, Minister, kutmakli, sel, guk, ngar len, ebol, gaw, ngir, urul, wasi, kadmo, gi, la, gi, teacher certification. Si, adi, gudar, se, President, mal, mri naga sulim, gi, teal, teal.
Sulam, Senator Tabloal, wongil, information. Ngari, ngod, miscellaneous news. Sumu, de, geflore, eda, mora, announcement. Senator Ngire Bangla.
So, ra, teale, Mr. President, the Vice, wasi, agamitira, agora, Foreign Affairs and State Matters, amoholdra Confirmation Hearing, irela, Mr. David Orum, el mosur, bil Ambassador, morsel Republic of China, Taiwan, team, mor ngir, o, ngal, uru, ra, taklo, ora, mutul olbi. Narugun Members, invite, sulam.
Ngari, ngod. Senator Tabloal.
Si, ndirigel, buti, bol, ngani, kara, agamitin, ma, adal, interest, si, ngariya, hearing, ra, pre-appointment, ra, mi, su, ngammo, trastir, ra, Palagamitika, let's, se, gi, rela, ru, klo, ra, klugu, eh, di, o, nginil, se, kada, dirigel, hearing, ra, Mr. Joseph Anastasia, la, board, ra, PNSB, eh, se, ngare, de, klo, ra, klugu, ma, kung, it, tang, es, teki, Members, emposi, enmed, estir, tiagel, namni, bot, gaw, ngel, gi, rela, iwe gi, appointment, artir, sulam.
Announcement, ra, flora, di, mo, extend, ra, two days, special session, gi. Short Traces. Dodonge, sessionel mora order. Flo leader.
Mr. President, kada, mno, ra, wises, e, agora, amla, mle discuss, amohored, ra, klugu, ma, al, wese, ebok, kralia, moshun, ma, bos, eda, longali, teal, lai, el, mol, mutra, klugu, ora, ten, okla.
Si da motionu namdungesegna, tirgi, gongel du oi, omtok, namoy, si.